All right, it is September 16th, 2021. The Scottsboro City Board of Education Work Session has called the order. It looks like we have a delegation. Mr. Gary Morgan. Mr. Morgan, before you begin, I need to make you aware of what the rules are. At work sessions, the public is invited to attend the board work session and shall be given a limited time to voice opinions and discuss through the following procedure. An item entitled delegations will be added to the agenda of each work session. A delegation may consist of one or more concerned citizens. Citizens designed to address the board will be given an opportunity to do so at this time on the agenda. If the delegation consists of more than one concerned citizen, a spokesman will be designated by the group who represent the group. Each delegation will be given five minutes to express their concern to the board. Delegations will not be allowed to make slanderous nor libelous statements concerning employees of the board nor members of the community. The good name and character of individuals not be addressed at these open meetings. The board will not take any action at the end of the delegation report, but may ask the superintendent to look into the concern expressed by the citizens. The board may also suggest the delegation contact the superintendent, principal, or So at this time, you've got five minutes.
Thank you. Board, I'm taking, I can project my voice pretty good, so I don't think there's gonna be a problem with you hearing me. I am Gary Morgan. I'm a resident of Scottsboro, and it's always a pleasure to be here. And I am here to talk to you about an item I have discussed and sent emails to the folks I could get in contact with or on Messenger, on Facebook. And the item is communications. And I hope everyone realizes that communications is a two-way street. And I appreciate the opportunity to be here and speak to you, as every citizen should be appreciative of an opportunity to speak to any public body. Facebook, the Scottsboro City School site. Now previously, I guess before September, and previously to me making some comments on Facebook about hoping that the school board and the Scottsboro City School system, the people responsible, would adhere to the protections and preventive principles of the CDC and Alabama Department of Public Health concerning COVID-19. And I had posted that on several entries on Facebook. What has happened is that on the Facebook Scottsboro City School site, the opportunity for citizens to comment has been removed, except on certain sites. Basically, up until this past week, comments were not allowed from the top down to about, I don't know, maybe two weeks ago. That's a problem. Like I said, communication's a two-way street. And y'all just opened up a new means of communication. You talked about it. And I wrote a message to, I believe, Ms. Bradford about this. You may have heard about this message. "I express concerns about the communicative process." You cannot close Facebook up to citizen comments. I'm asking you not to do this, to open it back up. And that's because if you don't, you're creating a problem for yourselves. I have spoke to several citizens about this. I have consulted with attorneys about this. All of them in agreement to include ACLU. And there's been cases federally. Boards, commissions, councils have not won anything. They've lost where either a board member has blocked a constituent, or the board or commission or council itself has blocked citizens. You can't do that as long as you stay within community standards, as long as you're respectable. And personally, I would never say anything disrespectful. If I've got a problem, I'll come to you personally, or I'll state a problem, but never disrespect. I always meet community standards. Some people may not like that. Some people may not agree with meeting the requirements of COVID protections. But besides that, blocking communications from citizens? Oh, no. Please don't do that. Please allow citizen comments. A two-way communication street on Facebook. That's what I gotta say. Thank you for your time. If there's any questions, I'm right here.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. We appreciate your input. At this time, I think we're gonna move on. Thank you for your comments. Thank you for your comments. Thank you for your comments, sir.
Sure.
At this time, I'll turn it over to Ms. Childers. I'll start with the consent items. Item number one, the board minutes. Looking at the board minutes for August 19th, 2021 board work session, August 19th, call of board meeting, August 25th, 2021, call of board meeting. Any questions or comments about those particular items? Okay. Item number D, September 2nd, 2021, regular board meeting and first FY22 budget hearing. And E, September 20th, excuse me, September 9th, 2021, call of board meeting and second FY22 budget hearing. Any questions or comments about those particular meetings? Okay. Item number two is financial statement and bank reconciliation for August 2021. Thinking Ms. Corbin Lawson emailed that information. I know she's working on that. Can you give us that date on where you are with that?
Yes, ma'am. We actually have an issue with our reconciliation. If there's a life event with a PIP, if someone gets married, if they have a child, we have to actually change their PIP. And there was a deduction that was taken twice. So we're trying to get our software to help us get that. So that's why we have not been able to complete our bank reconciliation. They walked us through that, but it deducted out twice. And so that's the reason that I haven't been able to give you that particular information. I did send you the check register. I did send you the credit card statements, and I did send you the principal reports. As soon as we get the bank reconciliation completed, I will send that as well as your spreadsheets. And I hope that we'll be able to do that the first of next week. But I'd be glad to answer any questions you have on what I did send you.
Do you guys have any questions? Or are those ready for the fundraisers? Does anyone have questions about any of the fundraisers that you see there? It's just the two, isn't it? Yes.
Have you been using a microphone or something in the past?
I'm not sure.
It might be my hearing or something, but it just seems like I'm not hearing. I know we got masks on. It looks like we were hearing a little bit more clearly in times past.
I haven't been using a microphone, Dr. Spears.
We did it in the past, Dr. Spears. After this is over, I'll go sit behind my stand and set it back.
Would you like, would you like, Mr. Holder, to set that up and set that up?
No, I'm just, it's a future person. Yeah, I like.
Yes, sir. Okay. Yes, sir.
I mean, I can present pretty good to Patrick down there, but some people may not be able to do that.
And I'll try to speak more loudly as well.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Yes, sir. Any questions on fundraisers? Okay. The action items then, starting with personnel. I believe that what we are looking at, we still have the strength and conditioning coach position that's open. We are looking at after-school assistance. We are looking for potentially a school nurse. That is an anticipated opening. We have posted the data manager and mental health therapist again. Those are, were listed as anticipated again because our ESTER III budget, you guys have approved that budget, but we're still waiting on approval from the State Department. So we would not be bringing that before you for action until we get that approval.
Hello, Dr. Spears.
I'm sorry, Dr. Spears.
What were you saying about ESTER funds?
Yes, sir. The, the mental health specialist and the data manager position, we have listed those as anticipated, but we, we opened that up so that we could start looking at the applicants. But we would not bring that to you for action without the ESTER budget being approved by the State Department.
Which will be when I tell?
Well, we've submitted it. We're waiting on them to approve it. So I hope that is very soon. We hope that somebody reads it quickly. All right, the supplemental positions. I'm sorry, does anyone have questions about any more of the personnel that I mentioned? All right, the supplements. We are working on this. Just to make sure, as you know, Mr. Dudley came in right before school started, so he wanted an opportunity to review. He and Mr. Hodges and Mr. Arnold have been taking a look at this, and we will send this out to you again. You know, I've been in training this week, and so we haven't any scheduled early next week to discuss. And if there are, in fact, any changes or anything that's looking through that we see needs to be updated, we'll send you a revised supplement sheet prior to working. But we wanted you to see where we are right now. We do have three summer contracts that we wanted you to take a look at. You have in your packet, you will have one. This is the previous contract. And it did, the language of the contract date was for July 8th through August 1st. We feel like that was an error when it was, when the contract was developed, because these contracts, the work, the work started, because again, they're supplemental positions, and they started their work with their score in June. So we need your approval to amend the date so that we can pay the employee for the time that they worked in June.
That was just the last one, right?
Yes, yes, sir. So any questions about those? Okay, the next item is number three, retrofitting buses with air conditioning. I will ask Mr. Holder, please provide an update on that.
We set aside enough money in the ATF budget to do seven buses. I think it was $90,000 we set aside. We can have that done for $12,586 a bus, which will allow us to do seven buses. And they seven hundred new ones we've got. So we've already done one, that's why. But we did, the first we did, nobody could really tell us if that was a good idea or not a good idea. Well, it's, so far, it's been good. I think I look back, and I brought it to y'all last February, and I retrofitted one, so we paid it over a year. And it's been, I mean, really, we didn't know it wasn't ordered with it. You don't, you don't tell it, and it's worked fine. They code made it, and we thought they would. And they code quicker than we thought they would. So we set aside enough money. This would give us, that was a 20 model that we did. We still have one 20 model that wasn't done. And then we have two nine things, two, three things, and a seven thing. I believe this quarter, we retrofitted it. Like I say, we've, that's been great. And if we've got four brand new ones the last ten years, you know, we purchased brand new ones with it. You know, it's amazing, step on one even everything, and step on one there. So, like I said, we could do 12 on it, a thousand, 12,000, 500,000, 12,000. I'm sorry, we did seven of it at 12,586.
Well, they, I just want to say this. I guess guaranteed that the add-on will go as good as the factory?
Well, it has, Jase, that's what I'm saying. We got one. We got one.
I got it.
Yeah. That summer, we got, I'll give you an example. We got, we had to go check on turnarounds, see if we could get the bus turned around, Jake, and I did. So we don't, play there. Most times, errand, you can start fixing, and we got them in July. I'm the guy at the highway, and then we had to go back over Stewart Road. I'm the guy at 279 Broad Street. It's good. It's good. It's been really, it's been good, and we enjoy it. We're going forward on that. We would like to continue to do that, you know. We're not fully funded to purchase or pay.
It was a little cheaper to get it, if all of us knew that it was.
That's what we looked at. We got about $83,000 above. We got enough for two, but we got $166,000 last year on the fleet renewal. She's not looking at this today, actually. $83,000, some odd dollars. The new buses we purchased this year, which was off of last year's bid, because they allowed us to do that same price, were right at $97,000. So there's a difference of, $98,000, I'm sorry. There's a difference. So about, a new bus, though, without air conditioning, is somewhere between $84 and $800. So it's, this cost is very similar to just purchasing one brand new with it. It's within $1,000.
How many buses do we have on the road per day?
Per day? We got 21 regular routes and two special needs routes. Or I'm sorry. We've got 21 drivers. About 10, 10 drivers drive two routes. 11 drivers have a single route. It may be a primary, it may be secondary, but 21 buses running routes like that, plus the two special needs buses.
But we're to do this again next year, and I don't think we do.
Well, next year, I need to buy a special needs bus, because we've got 11 of 15 of a running, and 11 of them off the fleet renewal. And they're more than a regular bus, about $20,000 more. So that would only leave us if the fleet renewal was the same as this year. And I feel like it's on the, because of the talk that already been, our route reports are due next month, based off of this one, that we are funding this one for next year. And they're already talking like, because of COVID, they're gonna kind of keep us at where we were prior to COVID on our money. So that would gone, if a new special needs bus is about $120,000 based on what we've been giving, it's gonna leave us, I think, $46,000 or something that is not enough to buy a new bus. It's barely, not even half. So we'll begin with another bus, and we set on that money and roll it next year, and then I've got money to set extra money, so to speak, to start back buying to it again. And that's what I gotta find out, with that money roll up. If it doesn't, then I don't know what we're gonna do. But I need to get another special needs bus.
The special needs bus that we have, will they air condition?
Yes, sir. That's, that was mandated a long time ago. Over 10 years ago, they had to be air conditioned. Maybe longer than that.
Any problems with the seal, anything? Seal, big? Let's hear a little story.
And then check, you remember, drivers checking everything. And your hands are gonna turn on some on, if we did have one.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, next is FY22, principal and central office administrator evaluations. So as we've talked about, the evaluation process for teachers and administrators is changing at the State Department level. We are in the process this year of going to train to see the new teacher evaluation tool, because we will work on the pilot of that, and that'll begin implementation next year. But we don't currently have an evaluation process for our principals or our central office administrators. So I have been talking with other superintendents to see what they are using. We can use the former, it's called LEED Alabama. That is still active, and it's still fine to use, but most districts are not using that, because it's not tied to the continuum that we're going to be working from. So most districts are moving away to that and doing their own. So in talking with different superintendents, everybody's kind of doing a little bit of something different. And so one of the things that I have done is reached out to AASB and asked if they have evaluations for us, because I think they have pretty sound evaluation pieces. And they're certainly willing to work with us. They don't have them completed. We do have to pay for that service, but I would like to use them. And when we get down to information, I'll kind of tie this all together. But I don't have them completed. But I wanted to go ahead and put it on the work session, because in the event they're able to get them to us in the next several days, I'd like our administrators to have an opportunity to review those and to provide input on those before I get them to you to approve. But I would like to be able, in the October or November window, to be able to start the evaluation process. So that's why I'm trying to get it here now, so that you can hopefully get them approved at our October meeting. And if we don't have that piece ready, then we'll put it back on the work session again, and then maybe we'll have it ready by the October and or the November meeting. I hope that we have it ready to go by then. But again, I want them to have an opportunity to take a look at what is built for us, and then have an opportunity to provide input, to see whether or not they feel comfortable within their area for the central office directors, and then principals and assistant principals as well, to get an input, so that we're all on the same page as we begin that process. Any questions about that piece? Okay, next is FY22, virtual learning platforms and professional development. This has come from our ESTER III budget that you approved at the last meeting before we sent our ESTER budget into the state. This is part of this professional development is to help address learning loss. And so the first piece is our Renaissance product. It is actually called, it's a product called MyOn, and it is tied to our Star screener. And remember, we use that screener for K through 12. We screen all students for reading and math. And this is the reading component that goes with Star. And once a student takes their assessment, it then drills that assessment, it identifies to that individual student to provide support in the area of reading for that individual student. So for example, Ms. Stewart, if you and I took the Star assessment, we might have different assignments in MyOn to work on, because we might be at different levels. So that's what this product does. We know that it's, it's a great product. We got to actually have a pilot of this product last spring, and our teachers really liked it. So I don't know if you remember, we used Frekell last year, and they have actually, their input was that they had rather had this product than the Frekell product that we used last year. This quote will have to be updated, because we did not have the ESTER budget approved. So I have reached out to our provider to get us an updated quote. I don't see that there'll be any difference in the cost, but I'll certainly give that to you. But I wanted you to be able to see that per school, so that you can see what that total is. And again, this is a reading piece only. And it accompanies the Star assessment. Any questions about that?
If it's reading, what about the math aspect of it? Do you have another component?
Yes, sir. The math component is built into their new textbook series that we adopted. So we, we are very excited about that, because they have their own product built in, and the teachers are working on training to learn that product. So we're able to, you know, we're glad to be able to use that, and that made us need to get something for reading. So we wanted to get this product, because it is attached to the Star. But then their math intervention is built into their new math textbook series. Any other questions? Okay. All right, the next is, this is a product called LIMPS. One of the things with federal, the federal fines, our ESTER monies, we have to provide back to the State Department, as well as the federal government, the summary of effectiveness of the programs that we're using to help instruct students and to find out how we support each individual learner. And this is a product that several school districts are using to show us. It will actually sync with Power School. Again, Russ, I may be using those words incorrectly, and I'm not sure if syncing and Power School go together in the same sentence, but I think they do.
They do.
And anyway, this will allow us to see by classroom, by grade level, you know, where are we seeing the greatest need to be addressed? Where are we seeing our greatest strength? It will really help us identify what we're doing well and where we need extra support. That could be lots of different things. It could be, you know, you could have a brand new teacher. And we could say, we could use that data to say, oh, well, this clearly shows, this is why we need an instructional coach, helping that teacher a little bit. So from what we understand, it's a great product from the systems that are using it, but if we don't get some type of product like this, we're still bound to have to figure out on our own how we'll show how effective our programs that we use, this federal money, will work.
Have we, have we talked with any of these other districts to just see what results they have in business?
Yes, sir. Coleman City is actually using this right now. And they, I have not spoken directly with Coleman City, but through the provider, they have their, the districts that use this. Coleman City, I believe Florence and/or Sheffield, I'm not sure which one of those, but in the tri-cities area, are using it. And they all have provided written feedback that was very positive, that we really liked. But I can certainly reach out and actually try to speak with the individuals. If you have the likely to do that, I'm happy to do it.
I think you should.
Okay.
It's a tough pick, though, to see.
Yeah, absolutely.
The days and the nights, and crossing the humps.
Okay.
Good bad magic.
Sure, be glad to. I'll provide you an update as soon as I'm able to speak with, and we may get various people to give us different input. For example, Ms. Hood or Mr. Haskett speak with a curriculum specialist to see what they feel about it. I don't mind trying to reach out to the superintendent. We may get a couple of teachers or our coaches to reach out to some coaches and find out as well. But I'll be glad to do that. The line's proposal that's in here, this is a, this is a proposal, Dr. Mark Kurtmeyer with Ed Talents is going to provide some, or we hope he is able to provide some professional development. Again, this is in, this was in the ESTER III budget that you guys approved. We have the new principals that we have, with me being new in my role, new central office directors. We have the need to provide assistance to us in those roles, so that we are not missing deadlines, and that we're continuing to offer quality services to our students. We'd love to be able to do that. And then part of the other piece of this is a leadership development academy for aspiring leaders. So what we want to do is to be able to grow leaders, so that as we, you know, as we are leaving the field of education, we not only have definitely gained professional expertise in our own area, but we are providing that and turning that around to those who are going to be our leaders in the future. So this is one of the pieces that I'm most excited about. And again, it meets some of the professional development requirements of the ESTER budget as well. So this is a, I think it'll be a great opportunity. Dr. Kurtmeyer was here with us for the summer retreat meeting we had in July, and I think he will bring a great group of professionals and help support our needs that we have.
Y'all were gonna ask, was this the same zone that presented at the retreat?
Yes, sir.
And so additional people will be with him?
He consults with, there are several former principals, superintendents. There's several retired that they consult with throughout the state, and not only the state of Alabama, but I would also add, you know, Uh, and not only the state of Alabama, but I would also add, you know, it would be other states as well. I know there are some people that he knows from Georgia and Mississippi and places like that. But we would like to get people who were working in the state of Alabama so that they can help support the work that we do. Uh, so yes, they would, they would provide consulting uh partnerships with us. That could look like in person, which is what I hope that is because I think we would all agree that we grow a little bit better when we have an opportunity to be together, much like our kids, virtual as opposed to in-person learning. Uh, but not only that, but then, then them working with us to turn our information around and then build our Leadership Academy for aspiring leaders is also going to be powerful.
The cost of $50,000, does that hurt ESR funds?
It is, yes, sir. And it breaks down in here how many days that would be throughout the year. One of the things we did not want to do, we didn't want to start this first semester. We wanted to get the year off to the start. And we wanted to be able to get that going in early January. And, you know, we could potentially alter those dates. The main thing is getting the budget in ESR approved and then working out an arrangement, you know, with him. But I wanted to be able to have this out on the table so that if you have questions or if there's anything you would like us to build in that you don't see, we're happy to do that.
So if you're, if you're, if you're thinking about starting in January and you said for about 32 days, the last 32 days being the second semester, or would it run over?
It would probably then carry over, Dr. Spears.
To the, to the first semester of next year?
Yes, sir. And when we were building this, we just weren't sure, you know, the timeline of when ESR, when the federal, uh, the State Department, the feds would review this because both entities must review it to approve it. Uh, so we just weren't sure of the timeline of when we could be able to get started. So if it's sooner rather than later, we'd love to start sooner, but that was just kind of a projected timeline.
Does some of those 32 days begin in the fall?
Yes, sir. Which we would love that. We would love an opportunity for our summer uh retreat to be able to maybe have some of those days built in where we would have, you know, the designated time there to do some of the things that we weren't able to do uh this summer. Okay, any other questions? All right, number six is the FY22 Continuous Improvement Plan. Again, we wanted this to be on the work session for us to discuss. We will get those plans by each school to you. Uh, they have a deadline at the State Department to be turned in on October 15th. And the schools are working very hard to get those completed. But unfortunately, they just don't have them ready tonight. But uh, I think over the next couple of weeks, we should be able to see them. I know, again, their teams are working very hard to get those completed so that we can get them to you. Any questions about that? And then number seven is the C and P stopping for extra meals, FY21. And Ms. Melville?
I'm asking employees to enter paying C and P employees a $300 stopping for the extra money they get last school year and preparing meals for evening days. This was an opportunity for us to reclaim some of the money that we otherwise would have lost because the kids would not have been building that day. But on a typical day, right before evening, my staff had to prepare breakfast and lunch for that day. And they also had to prepare breakfast and lunch to be taken home for evening day. And I gave you some uh average numbers in the memo that you should have in your packet. But um, that's what we're proposing is to get, pay them a little extra for doing that. And FYI, the USDA um gave us an emergency money to help us with the loss of meals that we had in the school's clothes back in March, April, and May of last year. And for our school system, that was around $89,000. So that, that money will come from that, so we'll not have an out of trouble.
You guys have any questions for Ms. Rogers?
Any questions?
Please, your question. And Ms. Melville, this is approved at the October 4 meeting. Would you want those funds to then be distributed then, or what would be your timeline to be distributed?
Depends on, don't you have to run a discussion check before that?
Yes, I do. But we can do that if that's what you mean by it approved throughout October.
Are there designated uh purposes for those funds that you're talking about using these funds for? Are there specific areas that you have to spend?
If there's not those specific areas, uh, I'm just saying so.
Okay, so with that, all right. Any other questions? All right, the revenue three outlines some information items. You have a fundraiser list. This is what has been approved to date. Just, I mean, you have that for your um information. Number two is the sub-list, which is attached. And I know Mr. Willby is not here, but I am thinking that the new, after we did the new uh workshop, those subs would be on here as well. Any questions or comments about the sub-list that you see?
I got one just general question. Whenever they ask to be moved and then they get re-added, did they give reasons? I mean, not without personally being an institution for each and every one, but is it just my child needs to be home, I can't sell anymore? And then I'm killing the kids now in 10th grade, so.
Yes, sir. There's a variety of reasons for that. Sometimes they do find employment, you know, elsewhere. Sometimes they'll come back and say, uh, I went to the junior high today. I think I, I prefer to be with younger kids. Or sometimes the, it could go the other way around. Sometimes they could say, you know, I was at that some today and I love kindergarten children, but I think I, my preference would be to be, you know, in this particular grade level or area. And then, as you said, sometimes they make those decisions that are, you know, I think I need to be at home or just stay home with my child for a while, so.
So just a handful of these names, I see all your handfuls.
And I'm glad to see that we uh continue to have a sub-list besides what we do given uh where we are relative to the pandemic right now. It is very difficult to find subs. And so I'm grateful to the ones who are coming and filling in for us. We really appreciate that. Uh, next is the proclamation, just to let you know that October is Dyslexia Awareness Month. We'll be getting an updated proclamation from uh Dr. Maggie's office that we can share with you. But I wanted you to know because there'll be specific activities in October that will be built around uh dyslexia. And our new dyslexia specialist, I know her, her title is not that. There's a multisensory, there's a, there's a lengthy name of her title. Uh, but she is uh doing a great job for us and she does some great activities that she'll be playing for that month. Uh, next up, number four, departmental procedure manuals. This is a, an area that when we went through comprehensive monitoring specifically was addressed uh through Sheila's department. But it does affect every department that we have. So if you don't mind, Ms. Sheila, will you kind of give them an overview of what I'm talking about here?
When the school system went with the AASV, the policy manual, if you remember, the old manual was about this big. And now you've got one that's about this big. All of your procedures were in that policy manual. So because a policy, a procedures manual was not adopted when the policy manual was, then all of those procedures that were in the old policy manual are still in effect. Those are, some of those are very old, outdated. So one of the things when we went through the audit, they asked from my department, they said, do you have an employee handbook? We did not. We had the information in that procedures manual. And one of the things that they asked us to do is to begin work for our next monitoring. But they said it would be much better for us if we would get it done as soon as we could. So they want a procedures manual for each department. I have a procedures manual that we use for some of our financial procedures, but not all of those. And it's the same way in every department. We know what we do. When they were here for monitoring for special ed, I had to bring the information to show them how we actually handled things. And they said, that was great. They asked me to write that up, type it up, and give it to them and sign it. But they said, next time we come, we want it to actually be in a manual. So we have to start working on a procedures manual for each department so that every employee knows what our procedures are for everything. In my department, that would be our travel statements, that would be reimbursements, any of those type of things, as well as payroll. So we, we need to begin working on these as soon as we can. And it's going to take some time because those are not things that you can just snap your fingers and have. It, it's going to take some time for everybody to have input in those and for everyone to know, including you and our employees, how we're handling things.
Thank you. And just to add off of that, uh, you know, we've had a very successful comprehensive monitoring. We received no citations uh in the accounting office, uh, which is pretty unheard of. So we thank you. We, we know that they were very generous in terms of the cause of the fact that they didn't have the errors of the finance department or the errors in each of our departments. Um, we didn't get cited for that, but we thought that is definitely an area of improvement. So, but even though there was no citation, this was something to be worked on. We feel like the consulting services that I just mentioned to you, this could be part of what we'd start to work with, with our new directors in place so that as they're learning their jobs, then we can learn those practices that go with it. And the, the reasoning behind that also is so that when you do have changes and movement from, you know, say the principal to a director's spot or something like that, then it, then it takes away from, oh, well, Ms. Hood is not in her department. We don't know how that department works. You have a manual that tells you, these are the steps you take. So it pretty much takes the, uh, I guess, the gray out of things and helps, helps to bring clarity. So we'll start working on that. But again, that's going to be a lot of work and I think it will be heavy on the front end, but will pay off dividends in the long run for us. But we just wanted you to, to know that because as we start to work on it, um, there's going to be some growing pains and there's probably going to have to be some comments that we work through as, wait a minute, we've, we've not done this this way before. So that, that's, those are things that we'll have to, you know, comes to agreement about in terms of what does, what does the procedure, you know, how does it need to look?
And if we had thrown our old policy manual away, we would have been in trouble because we would have not had anything in writing to show that.
Speaking of old policy manuals, do we also have a copy of the old board policy?
I have a copy in my office, yes, sir.
I'd like to get a copy, uh, please.
Okay, any other questions? All right, uh, number five is the Competitive Homeless Grant. Uh, Ms. Schankels, would you mind sharing this information, please?
Sure. Um, recently, we were awarded a $25,000 homeless grant. Um, this is based on the last four years of our homeless population, identified homeless students. Um, so our average, based on our average, our system was awarded 25,000. And how we're going to spend that is uh a small portion will be for the homeless liaison salary, which is Mr. Hask, um, staff development, some parent information. And but the majority of the 25,000 will be spent towards after-school. So um, for salaries for after-school children.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Uh, number six, Scotts Cross City Schools, AASV, this assembly you see, uh, AASV member pricing for assembly. And this is something when I talked about the evaluations, I said I would get to you to provide you more information when we, when we got down here. But I wanted you to see this. Uh, the piece, I have the evaluation piece highlighted there for you. But in order to get the evaluation piece from AASV, they require you to buy the meetings and the policy piece. Um, I actually asked for a demonstration of this because I didn't want to just say, oh, okay, we'll pay for this without knowing what that meant. And uh, so they asked for me and uh my administrative assistant to be present when they came and gave us a demonstration of how this would work. This is an online platform. You pay for the meetings, you pay for the policy. And what that means is it's all on an online platform. All of our policy, all of our board policies would be housed on, on a web, on their web-based platform. Um, they update in terms of making sure all the information is correct. Then they provide a meeting uh overview for you. So what you're looking at right now would have a different look and feel to it. And uh, AASV has, right now, there are 87, I believe. I may, I may be backwards on that, maybe 78. I can double check and let you know for sure. Uh, but I believe that there are 87 districts uh that currently participate in using this. And um, we really liked it. Uh, I didn't want to push it on Ms. Starla because I didn't, my thought is it's not something, you know, if you don't want to use it, Starla seems very excited, especially after she sees the process that she goes through in terms of putting this together. So basically, I'm willing to give this a try because I don't want to just have to pay for this part to just get the evaluations. Uh, but this is something that can certainly be moved to an action item if you want us to do it. It is, it still falls under the price amount that does not require your approval. But I did not want to make a purchase without you guys knowing what we were doing. And so if you preferred me to move it to an action item, I'm happy to do that. So Ms. Hood, I'll ask you if you don't mind, just to kind of walk us through where we are.
Well, we're seeing a decline in our activities right at the beginning of the year. It's a really big loss differences. We have done that 69 days following, whatever day we started to plan. We had, I'll be honest, we called, we did on the current task force. And as they talked about, it's been a positive layer of weekend. We're kind of expecting the numbers to shoot that perfectly. And as you can see, we still continue to plan every year. Beginning of the day today, we analyzed cases here on the fire system. Only two of those were new, um, 47 isolations. So the customer for days we've been calling from the higher teams, I think that's a good sign.
That is a good sign. Let me ask you a question. How have these been posted uh daily? It looked like the last one that I, that I saw, one of the ninth or something like that. It was 42 uh policies and 42 policies, 3U and 86 isolations. And, and I checked, but I didn't see it.
I have that in this spreadsheet. Now, I was like getting a couple of different records. It was a little like, I was about 12:00 conference. But I have that in this spreadsheet daily. Uh, I'm sure they've updated as well. And then updated to make some close of school, just to make sure that our members. You may see a few records, I want to make this too. Like for example, today, I missed it. Today's been two new cases. Um, sometimes we give reports of those after school hours. So we hold up to the next day. So it looks like there's a number of all the way, but many of those. And then, and of course, we got some of the coming back and some of the going on the second half of the year. But at the whole, it's pretty even across the system too. I thought that would be interesting to talk to you in particular school, that's what people see more than others. It's pretty even across the board. And again, most of our isolations that were being recorded is because of positive siblings or parents. Very few of those are leading results of the space. Very few of those are being results of this stuff.
Can you make sure that I get a copy of that? Because again, I'm right here, and I don't have the latest.
On the spreadsheet?
Yeah.
I think you have a color in the document, right? You don't have a bear?
No, no.
Oh, you're clear. Yes, sir. Okay, sure.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hood, for that update. Yes, that is, uh, certainly good news for us that we are seeing a downward trend in those cases and, uh, particularly those isolations. I'm proud to see that, um, declining as well. Just to update you also with the virtual learning platform. So tomorrow is the last day for our students. You know, we opened that platform back up as our numbers started going back up, and we had to readdress our emergency operations plan. We opened that back up to allow, uh, students K through 12, whose parents wanted the opportunity to, uh, apply to go online. And I wanted to share those numbers with you. So currently, we have 82 applicants. And just to kind of let you know, those 82, I don't have those separated by families. So it could be that there are multiple children within a family in that number, okay? But I can certainly provide you the breakdown by grade level if you'd like that information as well. Would you like for me to share that by grade level? Okay, I've got my glasses on. Uh, kindergarten, there are five kindergarten parents who requested. In first grade, there are nine. Second grade, five. Third grade, eight. Fourth grade, two. Fifth grade, six. Sixth grade, eight. Seventh grade, five. Eighth grade, two. Ninth grade, six. Tenth grade, two. Eleventh grade, 17. Twelfth grade, seven.
Seventeen?
Seventeen. So we will, that, uh, application window will close tomorrow afternoon, and we will follow the same, uh, application process as we did this summer in terms of wanting to meet with these parents individually so that they understand what the virtual platform will look like, how those assignments will come down, and answer any questions that they may have. Talk to each parent about what the standardized assessment piece will look like. Because even though they go to a virtual platform, we will still require students to take any state standardized assessments that are not waived this year. And so far, we've not seen anything being waived at this point in time, so... Uh, and just answer other general questions that they may have before we approve these students to the platform. What we found out in the summer is when we started, uh, our district team met with, uh, parents, once they started going through the questions and kind of understanding a little bit, some of them then decided, no, I think I want my child to remain, uh, in-person. But we want to give the opportunity to every parents to make sure that they have the opportunity to get all the information and then make a decision before we place them in the virtual setting. But I appreciate all the work from Ms. Hood, Mr. Haas, all of our, uh, district staff, all of our, um, district leaders that have worked on this committee to help us make sure that we're making sure parents understand and that we answer questions that they have. So those are our current numbers. And if those change by the time we close the portal tomorrow, then I'll certainly update you on where we are with those numbers. That's been pretty constant this week. We haven't seen, oh, it's getting towards the end. Let me get in here and plot. It's been pretty steady. Any other questions? Um, more comments? Mr. Wiegand?
Good. Just thank you for everything.
Mr. Wiegand?
Sure, thank you guys.
Mr. Morgan, thanks for conveying the expression of your concern, sir.
Mr. Benson?
Thank y'all.
Dr. Spears?
You're good. Thank you. Thank you very much, Dr. Meecham.
Thank you. I hope everybody has good homecoming. Ms. Childers?
I'd just like to thank everybody for the homecoming activities this week. Uh, I'm grateful that we are able to provide homecoming activities because, again, just trying to keep everything as normal as we possibly can for students. I really appreciate the hard work of everybody. And I don't want to say any names because I know I would leave every... Somebody's name would get left off. So I just want to thank everyone. It's been, uh, it's been great. I've been in training this week, new superintendent training. So I miss several things are going on. But I hear that we've had a great week, and I'm excited for it. I'm excited to participate in activities tomorrow. Uh, we are, we just had a webinar today about our academic data from last year. It's not been released to the public yet. It's coming out later this month after we've had time to certify that. So we'll be sharing information about what our data look like and what our plan is that's built around our, uh, return to instruction plan. We'll be talking about that. We're closing out the fiscal year, and we're still working to finalize. I think we're getting a little closer each day and making sure our district staff knows their role so that we can make sure we share that effectively to all of our faculties and staff. So I appreciate everybody's patience as we do that. And I just thank everybody for what you do.